Board of Trustees meeting to order at four oh one P M. Trudy, can you please call the roll?
Falkowski.
Present.
Nothing.
Here.
Mcnamie.
Yes, here.
Nunley.
Here.
Pismo.
Here.
Stanger.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
Zibble.
Here.
Okay, thank you, everyone. If we could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance unified by the United States of America, two republics, just stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just.
Mr. Zibble, would you please read the mission statement?
Certainly. Lake Tran is committed to providing quality public transportation services to all Lake County residents with special emphasis on meeting the transportation needs of seniors and people with disabilities.
Thank you very much. At this time, I am now going to turn the meeting over to our legal counsel, Mr. Dines, for the annual election of officers.
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd open the floor for nominations for President of the Board of Trustees for Lake Tran. Are there any nominations?
I shall nominate Brian Falkowski.
Mr. Falkowski, any other nominations? Okay, is there a second for Mr. Falkowski?
Second.
Okay. Having that been seconded, we'll now move to a vote. Mr. Epic?
Yes.
Ms. Mcnamie?
Yes.
Ms. Nunley?
Yes.
Is Mr. Pismo?
Yes.
Mr. Sheets?
Yes.
Ms. Stanger?
Yes.
Mr. Swanson?
Yes.
Mr. Zibble?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Falkowski.
Thank you, and thank you, everyone.
Now, open the floor for nominations for Vice President of the Board of Trustees for Lake Tran. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Gary Swanson.
Any other nominations?
I would nominate Mr. Zibble.
Any others? Okay, is there a second for Mr. Swanson?
Second.
Second for Mr. Zibble? Okay, we'll now move to a vote, and what you'll do is obviously state your preference for either person in the vote. Mr. Epic?
Uh, Mr. Swanson.
Ms. Mcnamie? Ms. Nunley?
Mr. Swanson.
Mr. Pismo?
Mr. Zibble.
Mr. Sheets?
Mr. Swanson.
Ms. Stanger?
Mr. Zibble.
Mr. Swanson?
Myself.
Mr. Zibble?
Mr. Zibble.
Okay. By my calculations, we've got four in favor of Mr. Zibble and four in favor of Mr. Swanson, and that would then go to our president as a tiebreaker.
I'd vote for Mr. Zibble, please.
Okay, all right, Mr. Zibble, congratulations. You've been reelected Vice President of the Board of Trustees of Lake Tran. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Are there any public comments in the room today? Matt, can you please confirm that the microphone is on at the podium?
Yes.
And if you could please state your name and address for the record.
Thank you. My name is Brian Massey, eighty-one ninety-six Rainbow Drive in Concord Township. My group is called Lobbyists for Citizens. A few months ago, I was here before the board, and I asked the board to consider rescinding the quarter percent sales tax because I basically believed since you changed the deal on the dialer ride that the money should go back to the taxpayers. I have now done extensive research on property taxes and working with the Lake County Auditor. I find out that there's an estimated thirty percent increase because of the sexennial revaluation going on in twenty twenty-four, which will be collected in twenty twenty-five. So therefore, there is going to be a further demand placed on the taxpayers in Lake County. And as I've said for many years now, if we stay on this path of ever increasing property taxes, we're going to price seniors and those living on fixed income out of their home. This thirty percent revaluation will impact everybody. So what I have been doing is I've been going to the various taxing authorities. I've asked the commissioners to forego their one point eight million in property tax that they'll recognize because of the revaluation. I've asked Metro Parks to forego their hundred and seventy-five thousand. And the reason I'm doing that is these taxing authorities have accumulated millions upon millions of dollars. Like Metro Parks has thirty million dollars. Crime Lab's got seven million. The Deep Woods got sixty-five million. We cannot continue to suck the lifeblood out of the community. Money belongs in the hands of the taxpayers so they can spend or save. And I'm very concerned about that. So I ask that that you waive or rescind or hold in abeyance the sales tax until you actually need it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Massey, and I'm going to answer a little bit of what you said there. And what I'm going to answer is that you came to us a couple of times now, and you've spoken. And this is going to be the first meeting where we do have a concrete memo to discuss from Brandon. He's worked with many government agencies, and as you know, sometimes that just takes a lot of time. So this is the first meeting where we have all of the facts and due diligence on our end to have a discussion at the board level.
Does it, may I ask you a question? Does it require multiple meetings, or is this just one of three readings? Or could it be decided today?
There is no three reading requirement here. The board could pass anything it would so choose today.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. Are there any other public comments in the room today? Commissioner Hammercheck.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, and thank you for this opportunity to address you. I would like to take this opportunity to express my thanks and gratitude to the Lake Tran Board members, administration, and staff for your dedicated service, commitment to our community, and fiscal responsibility. Lake Tran stands as an example of a paratransit system that is nationally recognized for excellence. The mix of record-setting grants and generally conservative money management has resulted in the accumulation of noticeable and impressive fund surpluses. I would like to ask the board, in the interest of good governance, supported by openness and transparency, to please pass a resolution to implement the Ohio Open Checkbook Program at the earliest practical opportunity. I would like to also thank your legal counsel for the due diligence in verifying that this board is, in fact, the taxing authority associated with the sales tax authorized by the people of Lake County. I would like to ask the board, in the interest of good governance, supported by openness and transparency, as well as out of respect to the taxpayers of Lake County, who have been so generous to Lake Tran, to please pass a resolution to suspend the collection of the additional zero point two five percent sales tax at the earliest time possible to allow for the spend down of the surplus funds. Furthermore, an annual review shall be made of the Lake Tran funding needs to ensure the continued delivery of high-quality services, support of infrastructure needs, and the necessary staffing requirements. Thank you for your consideration of these two resolutions, as they can both be adopted without harm to the Lake, to Lake Tran or the community that Lake Tran serves. I look forward to you affirmatively passing these resolutions this evening. Thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other public comments in the room today? Seeing none, we'll move on to our first agenda item. Is there a motion to approve the Lake Tran Board of Trustees Board Meeting Minutes of December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three?
Shumut.
Motion made by Ms. Stanger. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Epic. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic?
Yes.
Mcnamie?
Nunley? Yes.
Pismo? Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. We have approved the meeting minutes. At this time, is there a motion to enter into executive session to consider the employment promotion or compensation of a public employee or official pursuant to section one twenty-one point twenty-two G one of the Ohio Revised Code?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sheets. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic?
Yes.
Nunley?
Yes.
Mcnamie? Pismo? Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Please let the record reflect. The board is going into executive session at four eleven P M., and we will be inviting our legal counsel, Mr. Dines, to stay.
For our Zoom viewers, we will be back on, or for our YouTube viewers, we'll be back on YouTube once the balance. So we talked about this in September at the retreat. Since then, you know, we've done a budget, we've done a five-year projection, which is part of the budget. So I thought it would be a good time to revisit this. Mainly because I think based on, you know, where our projections are with the budget and kind of where things are, that it might be a good idea to make some adjustments to what I originally proposed. So just to kind of set the stage a little, if we can all remember back, or for those of us that weren't on the board, just a little history. We received three grants during COVID under multiple administrations over multiple different sets of rules, the CARES Act, what we call the Chris Act, and then ARPA. That totals roughly twenty-two point three million dollars. So that came into Lake Tran as three different grants. Technically, we spent those dollars, those grant dollars, at under operations and banked sales tax at the same time. Technically, that money is spent already, but in essence, it lives on in our bank accounts as cash. So this is the slide that you see every month that talks about our cash balances. You guys all recognize this. So what I wanted to do to give us perspective is if you segregated the COVID money, it would live down in that undesignedated cash area. So if the COVID money never came, if COVID never happened, and those dollars never showed up, the undesignedated cash number would be eight point nine million. So that's where that money is currently residing. So when you see the slide, you normally see it in a way that looks like this. If you segregated the COVID money, this is what it would look like, just kind of for reference, if we're all kind of following along. So I thought about this a lot, more than maybe I should in the last three months, and we haven't done anything for a while with this, but I think we really now in the first half of this year need to make a decision. And we need to do something because COVID's over. You know, we wanted to protect ourselves. We kept the COVID money there in case something happened. But COVID is over, and now it's the appropriate thing to do is to move forward with some kind of plan for the COVID money. So I want to talk about some options. Some of them are things you've heard before. Some of them might be a little out there. My objective is to make you think and make us think of maybe some easy solutions, maybe some creative solutions, maybe some solutions where you all think that I think about this too much. So bear with me on my kind of thoughts here, but I do think that it would be beneficial to cut a quarter of a percent sales tax for a year. That equals, based on this year's projections, that equals about twelve million dollars. This is kind of specific, but keep in mind, this is based on this year's projections for a whole year. So it's going to be a little bit of a variation of that.
Excuse me, Mr. Kapow.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Kapow, I'm going to recuse myself. As some of you may know, I represent the Lake Development Authority. So in the event that there's any discussion seeking legal advice or questions about that, I think it's best I step out of the room and just have me come back in when you're done discussing any partnership with them.
Sure.
Thank you.
Um, so I'll get into this a little more in detail, but that's one component we could do. None of these are required. These are just ideas at this point. One of them is to cut sales tax for a quarter percent per year. Another one, this is probably my sort of most out-there one, but would be to partner with the Lake Development Authority to fill the funding gap they currently have for the Fairport Harbor Transit Marina. Now, I know that sounds a little odd. I'll talk about why I think that in a second. And the last one would be to fund a grant program for sidewalks in Lake County, and I'll explain each one of these more in detail, but that's the general idea would be to do these or some combination of these. These could vary in lots of ways. This is a framework for conversation, which would reduce our total cash by roughly twenty-four million dollars. It's a little bit more than the COVID money, but it's not a lot more. So first off, there's a bunch of numbers on here, but this kind of gives you an idea of what a quarter of a percent sales tax cut would look like. We would spend our cash reserves in place of that revenue, so we would cut it for a period of time. Again, what I have proposed is twelve months. We would spend our cash reserves to replace that during that time. Again, based on our revenue estimates for two thousand twenty-four, that's roughly twelve point one million dollars. The reason I picked that amount is when I looked at our cash and all these concepts altogether, you know, there are segments of the population that their first choice is cut taxes. There are segments of the population that say, oh, we'd rather, you know, that money go to a large project. There's other segments of the population that would say Lake Tran should put service on the road with that. So, you know, Lake County is a diverse community. I tried to think of ideas that hit many parts of the community and not just one. So I would say we would try to do June first through May thirty-first. I have not talked to the Auditor of State, the Tax Commission, to find out how much notice they need. Typically, to commence with the levy, you need six months' notice. I'm not sure how long that takes to stop sales tax, but there is a notification process. And I'm sure that, you know, if we voted to do something immediately, it couldn't actually take effect immediately. We would need to plan that out and have further conversations about when that could happen, because there are some logistics that we don't control about when it could start or stop based on our preference. And that's something that we would need to have a little bit more conversation with the state to figure out when we would time it for. What that would result in effectively would be roughly a reduction in revenue in two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five, about six million dollars. So it'd be spread out over two years. So these are just, I wanted you to have what our estimates were for two thousand twenty-four, how much we actually brought in in twenty-three, because you can't predict exactly how much the amount would be. You have to guess in terms of the number of months and sort of go at it from what the estimates are. So first part of my recommendation would be to do this, which would get rid of a little bit more than half of the COVID money. Questions so far?
I have an observation. I don't think we can take Lake Tran money and give it to another organization. I think that's against the law. You've got to use it in what it was voted for. That's what I've been told by legal people and and anybody else I've asked that just can't do it. That's, that's my understanding.
Yeah, there are limitations to how we can spend our money. Yes.
Well, you can't do it with the two things you put up there, is my point.
Uh, we could, with, with, one of them one hundred percent for sure. The second one, we would need a little bit more legal advice, sure.
Well.
Well, but again, the COVID money is gone technically, and it's our sales tax now that we would spend. So this is all just sales tax. The, the reason I'm, I'm talking about it in COVID money is when you look at our cash balance and everything, it's, it's one-time money. You know, it's never coming back. It's not getting replaced by sales tax. It's a one-time thing, but it technically is spent, and what we would be doing is using sales tax dollars to do it.
Well, explain to me how the two things you put up there can be funded.
Sure, I'll, I'll get to that in a second. Is, do, do we have any questions about what the sales tax, where we are so far? So the second one, and this one is, you know, a little out there, and I know that, you know, I'm not naive to that. The Lake Development Authority has been working for a while on a transient marina in Fairport Harbor. The purpose of it is to begin development of the lakefront and to create, you know, these are the two purposes in their, their document that I cut and pasted. And it really is to help develop the lakefront. It's to help develop the tourism industry and support, you know, big picture Lake County as a whole. Had some conversations with Dave Anderson about this. It is part of the way through the funding process, and this is, this is the concept art, I guess, of what it would look like to give you an idea of what it is. A transit marina is a more or less a parking lot for boats for the day. It's not a place you store your boat overnight. It's not a place that you, you store long-term. It's where you come in on the weekend and you know, take place in activities in Fairport. So it's a little odd. I'm sure you're all thinking, you know, Ben, you might be a little crazy. The reason that I brought this to you, though, is that transformative projects like this in Lake County are rare. Lake County has struggled for many years to develop the lakefront, and this is sort of one of those catalyst type of projects that helps begin further lakefront development. And even though we're not in the business of lakefront development, we are in the transportation business. This is a transportation-related project. There is some, to Lane's point, additional due diligence that would need to be done to make sure this was a fit for what we can do. But what our sales tax is stipulated for is pretty broad. So initial conversations that I had with Brandon and some other folks is there probably is a way, if we had a desire to be able to partner and fund this project. I'm not sure that it's something the board is interested in. It is simply an idea. The reason I brought it up is right now, it's about a seventeen point three million dollar project. They've already got two point six million dollars in funding for the break wall, which they'll be constructing in the next year or two. So there's roughly eleven million dollars left needed to fund the project, which is in a similar order of magnitude to the amount of money that we have left of COVID that we should be thinking about getting rid of. So it's a good fit for that. The other reason is transformative projects like this can be very hard to fund. The commissioners have committed to fund part of this project, and this would allow them to not have to commit their funding to it. And, you know, I know that it's mission-adjacent at best, right? You know, I'm not naive to that. But when you think about the COVID dollars and what the purpose of them was, you know, this is something that the public is generally supportive of. If you talk to people in Lake County, have you ever heard someone not want the lakefront developed? You know, pretty much everybody thinks that lakefront development is something that the county should be doing. Should we be doing it is a whole different thing to talk about. Again, I really brought it up as something for us to have a conversation about. Didn't really expect any of you to sit here jumping for joy about it, but I, I wanted to kind of make everybody think a little bit, which is why I brought it up. So we would need to do a little more research and probably have some conversations about it, but it's out there as a project that we could participate in. The last one is a sidewalk grant program, and so every transit rider is a pedestrian. Every person that rides a bus also uses a sidewalk. We, Lake Tran has already built sidewalks in Lake County in multiple places. We regularly participate in improving accessibility from locations to bus stops with sidewalks, something we do all the time. It's part of, it is specifically allowed in our federal grant criteria. And so it is something that we have experience in, but the problem with us being involved in it is it's a lot of work. And so my concept is that we would have a grant program that would allow a city to apply to us, and they would build a sidewalk, and we could reimburse them for it. So we would not be the one building the sidewalk. We would be the one helping fund it. They would be designing, dealing with easements, kind of dealing with all the complex parts of it. Our staff wouldn't be doing it. It would have to be along transit routes, so it would have to be along our service areas. It would have to benefit us in, in some way, and it would have to have certain criteria that we would develop with an engineer included for transit purposes. So think of roads, so think of roads we drive on where would you want to be a pedestrian? Tyler Boulevard, part of Lakeshore Boulevard, Heasley Road, twenty all along from east of Painesville to Madison. Those are roads that we operate fixed route service on. Think about, put yourself in the place of one of our customers getting off a bus onto that road. Where do you walk? Where do you go? Think about the north side of Tyler Boulevard. You know, if you get off the bus, you're in a ditch. And so this could have a very significant impact to us, but also help communities. Sidewalks are traditionally hard to fund for cities. So I think there's a lot of potential here for us to help sort of everybody. The way, the way I would envision this working, if the board was interested, is every year is part of the budget process. You could put money into it, or you could put no money into it. You could put ten million dollars into it. You could put ten dollars into it. There's no rule or requirement. It would be solely up to the board's discretion as to how much you wanted to fund it. We would then create a scoring criteria that the board approved, and then every year, staff would open up grant applications. We would rank them. We bring them to the board. We'd present the projects. Ultimately, you would approve them, and then the cities would build the projects, and we would envision it working as we would reimburse them once the projects were done. So once the project was done, we would write a check to the city for the completion, which is how most grants work. You know, most of our grants are reimbursement process, so very similar to a traditional grant, just kind of a different source and could do some different stuff. So, so to answer your question, Lane, so on the first, the marina thing, yeah, we'd have to do a little bit more due diligence, but it is likely something we could participate in. This is something that we've already been doing, and it is not a stretch at all as far as what our authority would be, if you will. So.
As true as that may be, it is the responsibility of the cities and the people that live in the cities to maintain the sidewalks. I think that's part of their charter or whatever they call it. I don't think it has anything, if you want to fund something, we have a ongoing issue with getting a new safety center for Lake County, which they need. If there's any way we can get any money to, to give to them, I'd be in favor of that, but I'm told that there's no way you can take money that is voted by the voters to be used for the transit agency, not, not the lakefront, not sidewalks in cities. It's to run the, the buses that pick the people up and, you know, take care of the people that do the work and things like that. I don't see how these are that related, is my point, or shouldn't be taken care of by other means.
Yep. Yeah, there's no obligation for us on any of these things. My, my objective was to try and think of a, a, a patchwork of projects that fit many needs. Because the last thing I think that, that if the board wanted to consider some of this stuff, the last thing you add into this is the expansion of same-day dialer ride, which we've been talking about for a while. It's on the agenda next month. But my goal was to try and have a list of projects that would be defensible from many angles, because I fear if we just do one, we expose ourselves to criticism from, from other places. And so you know, the marina is a stretch. I know that. We don't, we don't have to do it. The sidewalks, I don't, I don't think are stretched. We've done that in the past. And so that was my goal, and also to kind of get the conversation going. You know, this is a a challenging topic that has a lot of angles to kind of think through, but I wanted to get the process out there and, and, you know, in front of the board to really have some, some, some conversation.
I don't think we should worry too much about whether it's legal or not. I think we should talk about whether the concepts are good, and then we can figure out whether it's legal or not. From my perspective, I can, I can some sort of a suspension or, or hold on the tax for a while, I think, makes a lot of sense. We, I don't think any of us can really disagree with, we're sitting on more money than we need. And, and I think it's appropriate for us to think in a conservative, proper management approach, what's best for their, for this organization, and what's best for the Lake County taxpayer, and how do we balance those, right? I don't think anybody can disagree with that. That's what we should be doing all the time. So some pushback on the tax, I think, is probably appropriate. This sidewalk thing to me makes some sense. I can, I can see some sense of that as you relate it specifically to access to the, to, to our facilities. I live on Lakeshore Boulevard, and for the life of me, I don't know what genius Uh, I live on Lakeshore Boulevard, and for the life of me, I don't know what genius thinks that painting a line on the edge of the road creates a safe sidewalk. It's just amazing to me that we don't read every day about somebody being clipped walking in those things.
Technically, it's a bike path.
Well, it's a bike path, but uh, you know, I I watch people walk down that all the time. You know, nine o'clock at night and they're dressed in black. And I, hello, but but um, I gotta tell you, for me, something like the marina is dead on arrival. Uh, I I would challenge you to think if you're a taxpayer and I walk up to you and I say to you, hey, I know you voted for the levy for bus service, we're gonna help build a marina. I hope that person doesn't have a bat in their hand, because they're gonna hit me with it. I it it, I just, I just cannot get from here to anywhere close to that kind of thinking. But if there's a way to, and and let me, let me back up just a touch. Getting our cash balance into some reasonable order doesn't mean that we should just spend the money that we do have willy nilly to get down to some perceived value. Um, I, that, to me, that doesn't make sense either. I think what we have to have is a controlled, balanced approach to this that that uh that we can live with and the Lake County uh, taxpayer can live with.
My comments on, excuse me, my comments on this is, I have a lot of questions about the reduction of the sales tax. And uh, I'm not sure that's really, but really a good viable option for us. Um, I would like to first of all, compliment uh, Andrea on getting the fifteen million dollars for the building expansion grant on that one too, cause if we hadn't gotten, if we'd gotten what we expected on that, we would be, have ten thousand or ten million dollars less already. So she did a great job on getting that, and that made me stop to think about, well, are there other grants out there? Since this money came in as federal taxpayer money, we're federal taxpayers, why can't we spend it here as our own own type of money? Is there some of, some grants out there that we would normally apply for that don't necessarily impact us applying for this grant in the future? I don't wanna, I don't wanna not apply it for a grant and then screw us up in the future. But is there something out there that we can not apply for that would help us spend some of this cash down? And then the other thing is, I came up with about fifteen, twenty different items of where we could spend the money, which includes a lot with the safety of passengers, the new services. Partnering with some of the local agencies such as uh, the sidewalk program or even with the veterans. We had talked about helping support the veterans a number of years ago, and I think that would be some way we could try to figure out how we could, could do more with that. Um, is there something that we could do that would really kind of help us generate some income in the future? That might then be able to help us not have to go after any more sales tax money or be worried about where some of the money is is coming from in the future. That one's a little bit flaky to me, but I just throw throwing it out there was I coming up with some ideas. Again, we have a lot of spaces like on Lakeshore Boulevard, where are the high populated used, high populated and highly used bus stops? Do we have the shelters there? Do we have the sidewalks there? Do we have the safety aspects there? Uh, how about any kind of new bus technology? Bus arrival technology, we we can have the signs up at some of the transit agents or transit centers. Why can't we put that out in other, some other places and try to keep that going? And I don't know if we have GPS technology already on the buses, so we know where the buses are and can track them all, but that was another thought that I had. And then we already had to train, um, partnered with Willoughby, Eastlake and Wickliffe, or Willowick on the TLCP project. There's gotta be more of them out there that we can maybe partner on too, a little bit there, where we get some transit some transit thought process into this development on these projects, so. I think there's, there's time that needs to be spent on coming up with some more ideas on how we could spend down some of this money rather than uh giving it, giving them back.
Why do we have to spend it? I don't understand. Why do we have to spend it? It's the taxpayers' dollars. Why do we have to spend it in order to, in in order to reduce this excessive amount of cash that we have?
Why wouldn't we not? If we have the cash, it fell out of the sky, Gary. So it it, it's not money that we would have gotten any other way, shape or form, so why not spend it on local projects or local things here that benefit Lake County and and the transit agency here?
Why not give the taxpayers a break?
How much benefit do you think that really makes to the, for the taxpayer?
Why don't we go out and ask some people?
Well, think about it. Twenty-five, twenty, point two five percent. You gotta spend four thousand dollars to save ten dollars. Each taxpayer. That's, that's what it breaks down to. So I I I, yeah, I I understand where you're coming from and trying to help.
On the other hand, it's twenty-two million dollars in the aggregate. So i- if you want to complain about getting ten thousand dollars, it's not ten thousand, it's twenty-two million dollars.
Uh, yeah, but e- each individual taxpayer is what you're uh, trying to identify with there. But again, the new services that we've been talking about, that helps spend down some of that money. It's a, it's the better use for the money, is what I'm thinking.
So I, I just wanna, I think this is, I I hate to jump in, but I think this is what, when I was sitting down thinking about this, this dichotomy was what I had in mind. Cause I think this represents Lake County as a whole, right? So, so where do we, where do you want me as a board to look for a compromise along these lines, right? And I think that that we have a challenge. You know, I I think Kim said it to me best. She's like, you know, someone else gave us a problem to solve. You know?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Cause, cause that's what happened. But the challenge is, is is we have to think about both sides, and how do you, you know, I, my job is to come to you with ideas and solutions. Where do you want me to help give you those options?
Can I ask a question before you?
Sure.
Before anyone else. Can the mo- can the money be used for things like bus shelters, uh, amenities at the bus shelter signage? I thought I remember you telling me at one point in time that that money, that that has to come from a specific other place.
So uh, what I meant when I said that was, we, we have money that does come from a specific place to do that. We, this money has very few limitations. The, the language of our levy says for transit purposes. So that is what sort of gives this money bookends, transit purposes. So yes, absolutely, this money could be used for sidewalks, bus shelters, signage, all the things that that Chuck listed are possibilities. What I meant is that we also get on top of this money as part of our federal grant annually. We have to spend one percent of that on things that enhance the riding experience. So roughly three hundred and sixty thousand dollars plus twenty percent has to be spent annually on things like shelters, signage. So there is additional money also, but this money could absolutely be spent on on that type of stuff.
Could it also be used to fund a second idea that we had developed on the strategic landing retreat? Let's say we moved forward with same-day dialer ride. Could it also then be used to, to put into place a second idea? From from the, from the pool of ideas that we had created at that point in time?
Yeah, this money can be used for anything that the agency wants to do, is like service or anything that we, any of our traditional things we could use this money for, be very, very easily. You could fund Sunday service. I would say, though, we have to think about, so those things are 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 great, and I totally support doing them, but those things by themselves aren't gonna take a huge dent
Right.
out of the total amount. So we do need to be thinking about bigger picture things like of a large project or a sales tax suspension, or, you know, you want to be careful with service, because when you put service on the road, you make a long-term commitment to the community, right? And so you want to be careful and you want to plan that out. So when I look at our budget and our projections, same-day dialer ride fits in there and and for the foreseeable future is not an issue. If you add a whole bunch of different services, you know, you're gonna add, you're gonna increase that burn rate to a point where it may be unsustainable. So depending on what services you wanted to add, you would want to look at those, get them out to some extent. Cause the, a- and that's why I've talked about this in a COVID money way, cause it's one-time money. And once it's gone, it's gone, it's not coming back. Yeah, I mean, my intention is still to put same-day dialer ride on the board's agenda for next month to consider approving. We have the funds in all of our financial forecasts to provide that service with no issues. But we still need to come up with a plan, in my opinion. And I mean, we, you're not obligated to. You could decide not to do anything with the COVID money and let it sit. There's no rule that says you need to consider something. I brought it to you because I I do agree that we should have a purpose for it. It shouldn't just sit, because the taxpayers' money just sitting in our bank account with no plan doesn't do anything to help them, right? Whether it's to give the money back, whether it's to spend it, if we have no plan for the dollars, we shouldn't have it. You know, I mean, in in a big picture way, why, why would I, I wouldn't give twenty dollars to my friend just for him to have. Right? You know, I I would want to know what it's for, you know? Are you gonna buy some candy with that or some, you gonna buy a movie ticket, like something? I wouldn't just say, here's twenty bucks, have fun. So that's the same concept here. But my, my challenge, I guess, to the board is that we need to start thinking about a plan.
Um, I'm gonna hold off on sales tax comments until we get to the sales tax update under old business. Uh, regarding some of the projects proposed, I do like the sidewalk idea. I think that relates um, very well to the mission. There's plenty of times on Tyler Boulevard that people are walking in the street in the winter, and I could see that if there were certain stops that were um, higher used, how it would be a benefit to those riders. So I think the sidewalks, I give that um, very high marks. I think that was a very good idea. The marina, for me personally, eleven million dollars is a pretty big stretch. Um, I don't see it relating closely enough to our mission, not that we live and die by our mission statement, but it does set the tempo of the organization, and I don't personally see it relating close enough. If there was some sort of bus stop transit hub, I could see giving a portion of money, but eleven million dollars seems like an awful lot of money, personal opinion. Um, but I do applaud you for being creative and trying to come up with a solution. It is transit related. Um, and especially given in northeast Ohio, I think you hit a lot of points on that had that, you know, the lake is something that's always talked about needing to be utilized, but this would have a very short seasonal lifespan, where at least if service is on the road, it's a twelve-month out of the year thing. Um, so those are just my feedbacks relating to Ben's ideas and concepts on these slides. Um, are there any comments, additional comments, I should say? Yes, Ms. McNamee?
I just wanted to point out, before you just spoke, Ben talked about use of the COVID money. Um, money from the sales tax going into projects like the sidewalks for service and so on. What all of he just said speaks loud and clear to me is that once we come to some agreement of some types of projects we're interested in, we need some very detailed research on our, and budgeting, on our financial statements to see what the impact of these looks like over time. Because such as Ben just mentioned, adding service, the burn rates more in that than just a one-time project like the sidewalks. So I think that we have to be very cognizant of the long-term finances, and we just can't spend something until we have an idea of what the long range impact is going to be and make sure that it's sustainable.
I think you're a hundred percent correct. I don't think we should just spend money to spend money. Um, and by the way, when I said I was not um, the biggest fan of the marina, that also doesn't mean I would put eleven million dollars into sidewalks, cause I think we will have paved a lot of Lake County by the end of it. Mr. Sheets?
Well, we're here tonight to decide if we should suspend the collection of the sales tax for a year. Or the, yes, you're the
Well, thi- this is just a presentation.
Oh, I understand.
Sales tax will come up later in our meeting.
Well, I I, that's, that's my point. Let's get on with the meeting.
We might be able to do that. Is there any other discussion on this topic? So, Mr. Kapow, are you looking for board members to ponder ideas that would interest them or ideas that relate to Lake Tran? What is the deliverable you're looking from the board between now and the next meeting?
Well, I guess my main objective was, do you want me and my team to be thinking of things to do with the money? Cause there is a lot of time and effort that goes into the researching and and collaborate or, you know, compilation of projects. Would you like us to just kind of ignore it? Uh, would you like us to further to develop, develop any of these ideas? You know, I, I can do whatever you would like, but I, I want to make sure I'm doing what you want me to be doing.
Um, my suggestion would be, why don't we table that little thought until we can done with the sales tax discussion, cause I think they're intricately connected.
Okay.
Okay, any other thoughts, comments? Seeing none, um, Ben, I'm going to uh, turn the meeting over to you for the financials to make some introductions.
Give me a skip same-day dialer ride?
Was that, oh, additional service. I apologize. Please go forward.
Okay, um, this is really uh, just a rehash of what we've been through on same-day dialer ride already. I just wanted to to make sure we have one more time. I I would like to put this on the board's agenda to be approved next month. Um, unless, unless you have any questions or issues or would like me not to, or or anything like that. This just goes over what we've all already talked about several times, so. Quick overview, service would be five AM to nine PM Monday through Friday. It'll also be eight AM to seven PM on Saturday. Oh, yeah, brief. Um, it'd be segregated from traditional dialer ride service, scheduled using a mobile app or phone. Um, we would have full-time drivers do it. We would have uh, ten drivers on duty, five in the morning, five in the evening, two spares. On average, a full-time driver does fourteen trips for eight-hour shift. Um, if the efficiency was identical, we'd do a hundred and forty trips of same-day dialer ride a day. Um, if efficiency dropped by ten percent, eight hundred and twenty-six trips, efficiency went up, it'd be a hundred and fifty-four trips. We have the range because we don't know exactly how it will happen, you know? In in theory, these would be shorter trips inside people's communities to go to the grocery store, so they might be shorter, but we can't say for sure, cause we don't know how the service would get used. Um, just like all of our services, it would probably take about three years to come to kind of an answer about how it was used. Um, the wild card there is that, you know, it's a, it's an augmentation of an existing service, so people are already familiar with it, so it might take a little less time. But it would still give us time to adjust as we went. And one of the things I think is important is we shouldn't be afraid to limit our capacity on same-day service. You know, right now, that's a challenge for us on regular service. I think we come out in the beginning of this and say, look, there's a limit to how much we can provide. Don't, don't expect the moon. This is a test. There's this much service. If it runs out, we'll adjust as we go. Um, just a reminder about the survey responses we got. Um, ninety percent more uh, people said they'd ride dialer ride a little bit more. Uh, frequency said they would use it at least once a month. Uh, forty-four percent of our riders stay home if they can't uh, or on a same-day trip, because they don't have a availability. Um, forty-four said they would not be able to afford a higher fare. Um, we talked about app versus using a phone. Fifty percent they can, said they can use an app. Fifty percent say they prefer to use uh, traditional phone call to book a trip. Um, just an overview of the budget that we have in mind is, uh, we've talked about the two different fares. Me and my team are leaning on uh, a three fifty fare being the better way to go. It kind of, it it communicates to the rider that this is a a different, a little bit more premium of a service. Um, the budget is roughly a million dollars. If you account for fares, you'd, you'd be looking at about eight hundred thousand dollars of expenditures annually. Um, there are some startup costs, because you'd need to pay for the app and the other parts of the um, software to get that up and running. Um, just looking back at the schedule, uh, that we've talked about this for so far. Um, we are just in the review phase in January, so I do uh, plan or or have been planning to put on the board's agenda next month, assuming the board uh, would still like it there. And uh, happy to answer any questions, but that's just my quick and dirty overview, in case anyone had any more thoughts or wanted more information or or anything uh, like that. This is within our annual financial means outside of COVID. Say it again, I'm sorry. So this is, this would be fundable outside of the COVID dollars. So regardless of what the board chooses to do with the COVID funds, this project could continue with no issues.
Any questions, comments for Ben? Okay, are you looking for any feedback deliverables between now and the next meeting?
Uh, if anyone would like to go over this in any more detail between now and the next meeting, I'd be happy to meet, uh, phone call, lunch, breakfast, whatever works for you. But I really, I really think same day dialer ride is an important service for us to do. You know, the community and the world continue to expect things immediately, and I think this is a critical step for us to help fulfill that need. And I'll use the same thing I've said to people dozens of times. You know, you can schedule your doctor's appointment ahead of time because you know what it's gonna be. Do you know what day you're gonna run on milk? You know, do you know what day you're gonna need to go buy another ingredient? You know, none of us can can know those things. So this is a way for our customers to have the same freedom that that a lot of us do. So. Yeah, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I will now turn the meeting back over to you to do a brief introduction.
Yeah, so uh before we do the financials this month, I would like everyone to meet uh Matt Clark. Matt, raise your hand. Um, Matt is our new director of finance. Uh, he comes to us from buyer's products. I don't know if Matt, if you wanna say anything else interesting about yourself or uh just say hello.
Oh, yeah, hi, uh, just uh really happy to be here, excited to to dive in and uh make a contribution.
So Lisa will be with us uh until February twenty ninth. She's gonna be doing, she's already been doing a fantastic job bringing Matt up to speed, but um, we'll probably ask everyone if they want to come in a little early at the next board meeting to kind of say goodbye to Lisa in a a nice, a nice way. I will turn it over to her for the financials.
So we'll be going over the November financials because we're two months behind. Um, and that's due to our collection on the sales tax, although I didn't have that number uh before we started these financials. Uh, but next month, uh, Matt will be doing the financials for you. Um, again, we'll go over down the middle section for our actuals for two thousand twenty three, and we're in between the budget and the actuals for twenty two. Uh, our revenue so far year to date through the end of November is almost twenty eight point nine million. And our expenses are almost twenty million. And year to date, we I estimated um that we spent about two point three million for our local share on our capital expense. And that's up, you know, due to the um, the building expansion and stuff. And so next year, that'll be a little bit greater. Um, bringing us with an income of about six point seven million dollars and our estimated depreciation at five point five uh with our net income at about one point two. So again, um, down the middle section for the two thousand twenty three actuals, our uh twenty eight point nine million in revenue is made up of our fares, which is about three point four million. Um, we're actually better than we were last year in twenty two. We were still feeling the effects of that of the COVID a little bit. Um, but we're and we're doing a little bit better uh than what we had anticipated because we weren't sure, you know, how that would go this year. Um, as far as ridership coming back, but we're doing good on the um just regular fares on the buses and also for all of our uh fares that we get through the organizations such as DD and um Job and Family Services. And then our sales tax there in the middle, which is the majority of our revenue. Um, we're kind of right, right in the middle. We budgeted to be at about twenty one points, almost seven twenty one million, seven hundred thousand. We're at twenty one million, almost eight hundred thousand. And last year we were at about twenty one million, six hundred thousand. So we're somewhere like right in between. Um, so we're doing fair on that. And federal and state, and again, I'm gonna highlight, and I say this every month. If you look at last year, we were at about nine million in federal and state grants, and that was due to those COVID grants. Um, two thousand twenty two was last year, we received those COVID grants. And the amount that we have estimated for two thousand and twenty three under the budget and our actual, those are our normal grants. That's what we should normally be receiving um year to year from our federal and state grants. Which is about three point seven million for the share. Um, so we are about one million dollars more than what we had originally budgeted for twenty three, which is about three point eight percent of the budget. Um, on the expense side, under the wages and benefits, which again, we're a service industry, so the majority of our expenses are going to be under wages and benefits. And we fall right in between our budget and what we spent for last year. Um, we have increased our services, so our expenses should be up compared to twenty two. Um, and our total expense obviously is about nineteen million, eight hundred thousand, and we're a little bit less. Um, but again, that's, you know, we haven't, we didn't get to hire everybody like we wanted to at the very beginning. So they're still going through hiring events now and, you know, trying to place those services into uh, you know, full full speed, but it takes time. So sometimes it takes three to four months to get all that implemented.
I just want to add real quick, just remember this is from November and remember October is when we're having hiring challenges. So this fact that wages are down is think all the way back. It seems like forever ago, we were having hiring challenges. So the reason these wage numbers are as low as they are here is because we were struggling to attract people at that time. We've been rebounding well, but that's why they're lower than you might think.
So this this sums up the operating and then this will be our total cash. So um Ben did show that on his presentation also. So Lake Train has it the fifty five million. Um, we have the operating reserve about seven million, nine hundred thousand. And then the local share of the board approved projects, which is in detail on the capital sheet that's provided in your packet. Um, that has the one what makes up the one point nine and the two point eight million. And it also has the uncommitted funds for the capital plan projections through two thousand and twenty seven. Um, STS, we have a cash balance of four hundred and sixty thousand. Anything from a capital standpoint would also be under the Lake Tran piece as STS, we just keep track of the operating piece separate. And then, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just have to interject this again. This does not allow, you know, we're showing expenses through twenty twenty seven. It is not allowing any income during that period in time. This understates our cash expectations over the next five years. You can't give us uh an accurate cash balance if all you're doing is projecting expenses. That does not give us the true story.
Okay, so can I ask you, would you prefer, so all this stuff at the top under the committed funds, that is inclusive. The uncommitted funds, those are ones we don't know yet. We, I mean, they're pretty much unfunded. Would you prefer that we not subtract that piece and just kind of maybe put that below?
I think if you're gonna show the, if you're gonna show the expenses, you gotta show the potential income. You know, I mean, uh, in or or don't show the expense, otherwise we don't get an accurate picture. Correct me if I'm wrong. If I'm wrong, I'll back down, but I don't know how you give us a a and this is not a criticism, please.
No, no, that's okay. I I it could be a note. I'm agreeing with you, Gary. I think it should be a note at the bottom.
Correct.
It's important to know that we do have. I think I think that the piece behind this with the capital plan projections is just to show that there are other thing. I mean, we're a big agency, so you're always gonna be buying buses and doing stuff. And I think maybe that uncommitted funds maybe could just be a note. So down at the bottom, you have the capital plan update report with the one. We could kind of just throw that uncommitted out there, or we could just take it off. But maybe when we're doing that, just subtract the middle piece, which is completely um, that is a complete cash piece that is that should be subtracted.
Well, I have to, I have to admit that part of this is you know, I birthed some of these numbers in in conversations and so uh, the 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 concept that we were talking about when we were doing this was that uh the, as I remember, the uncommitted funds were things that we probably ought to know about as board members that are down the road. Uh, that we should be aware of that it's coming.
That is correct.
And and I'm fine with that, uh, personally. The other guys can speak, other folks on the board can speak for themselves. I think we ought to know that there's something, that's a big lump of cash out there that may be uh called called for, right?
Right.
But my complaint, if there if that's what you want to call it, is not that that's there. My complaint is that there's no offset credit
For the revenue.
That will indeed happen. And so this understates uh, the amount of cash that we will have five years out. And you can see that if you look at the five year projection. Because our cash balance over the five years, which gives all the expenses that you guys have asked for, all the buses, all of the equipment, all of the S uh, well, not STS, I suppose STS as well. Um, it's it's all in there. It's all baked into those numbers and that number goes from fifty nine million to sixty seven million or whatever it is in four or five years. So we're continuing to generate more cash over the five year period with all the expenses that have been asked for. This says, whoa, 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 wait a second, you know, we're, we may be overcommitted. And to me, that's misleading.
Okay.
That's that's my, that's my comment.
Okay.
The 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 complexity that we have to remember, though, is that cap- these capital items, th- there is no dedicated source of revenue for our capital. It's approved as the board chooses. The cash is typically held on the operating side of the business. And so I I understand what you mean.
But Ben, the only way we're gonna commit for that is we have cash, right? Right? We're not gonna commit for a capital project if we don't have cash.
Right, but we move, we might move it around, like so it
We might run some of these uncommitted funds around as well. I don't think you can argue on one side only. I think if you're gonna, if we're gonna do this, we need to present both sides of the equation. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I it's, I understand wh- where you're coming from. Uh, the the challenge is, is that the the uncommitted funds, if the board doesn't want to allocate capital or allocate the cash to it, we don't do the project or we move it around. It's not a foregone conclusion that it will happen. It's our sort of estimate. And so it's, we do our best to kind of give you an idea of what's coming, but it, the the sort of preference is always operations first, capital second. So we can do our best to to edit this, however, we, you know, we've we've worked, we spent a lot of time on this one, you and me.
A lot of bacon and eggs on there.
So we can change it to whatever the board wants to see.
Well, I'm just one member. If if I, like I said, if I if I'm if if I'm off base on this, speak up, please, but I find that this number is misleading. It's not where I thought we were gonna end up.
Yeah, I mean, I I can, I'm happy to go over with you some more a- and tweak it.
You won't convince me. I'll convince you.
No, I I my job is to show you, you know, the data you want and I I thought actually, I thought we had gotten, we had gotten there. So I'm, but I'm happy to 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 change it in 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 a way you guys want to see it. It's not a big deal.
All right, well, I would propose a simple way to do this then would be to say, go back to Lisa's suggestion. Don't deduct the eleven million, but note it.
Okay, I mean, that's why.
There's a potential out there.
Uh, yeah, that's part of why it's segregated on here. So you it's forty two.
So we'll just move the the line to the committed funds with the cash, and then you could still see that, and then you still see your planned projections. And you can either subtract it. Pa- pardon me, Donna?
What line are you talking about moving?
The line underneath the, like the eleven million, four eighteen, pretty much giving your undesignated cash, moving it up to under the committed funds in total cash. So you still see your
One big number.
No, what the what Lisa's is saying is you take the fifty five million at the top line and you deduct the next three lines. And and give us that number. And then below that, as a note, there is the potential of another eleven million, four hundred and eighteen thousand out there as uncommitted at this point.
Yeah, it's just the aggregate of the thirty one and the eleven.
A very long time ago, the board felt that it was necessary to indicate what funds were going to be necessary in as much as we could project it for the capital projects. Because without that, there was questions constantly about that number. And it made it look like we're just sitting on a ton of cash that was never going to be spent, when in reality, that was local match or whatever we had to do with it relative to capital expenditures. So somehow we've got to show it. I don't care how you do it, just as long as it's clear that there are funds that do have a direction in the future. It might not be a solid number, but it certainly gives us a better idea than just a big number floating out there. That people think we're sitting on some astronomical amount of cash with no direction for it.
Well, in perfect terms, we're sitting on forty two million dollars. We have eleven million that we might spend. But we are committed, if if you take our existing cash and then what we have committed to brings us to roughly forty two million dollars, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
And then hanging out after that is a potential that is uncommitted, but but things that we are looking at that will take another eleven million. The forty two million, at least in my mind, the forty two million that you get by taking the the top line and the three committed fund at forty two million, sounds a whole lot different than thirty one million. To me, particularly since we don't know on the uncommitted, we don't really know how much of that we're actually going to spend.
So do I understand correctly, you want to eliminate the line item capital plan projections through twenty twenty seven and just have a forty two million?
No, 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 not at all. I think we need to know the eleven million.
I think we just need subtotals.
But it but it does not, but the uncommitted does not since it's uncommitted, it shouldn't be deducted from our cash.
I think if we provide a subtotal for committed and a subtotal for uncommitted, that'll give you the totals in both areas. So you'll see uncommitted forty two million, committed, you know, ten, eleven million.
Yeah, right.
That would make more sense without losing track of the fact that there is a necessary amount that we have to allocate for capital projects.
I think I think you guys are saying the same thing in different ways.
We we don't want to get rid of it.
We will, we will sub, we will subtotal the committed and uncommitted funds, so you see what those total amounts are. I think that will help. We'll help everybody, that. Happy to, happy to talk about it more, too.
Okay. Okay, good, okay, all right. All right, so now we're on to, um, this is the special transportation services, our STS budget. Um, we uh budgeted to be at a hundred and eighty four thousand for revenue. We did like a two hundred, two hundred. Um, was our budget for two thousand twenty three. And again, we didn't really know in two thousand twenty three where we were gonna go. Because when we originally started STS, it was right before COVID and we never even had a full solid year of good revenues and expenses um to base our numbers on. So anyways, so we'd have ninety four thousand, four hundred and sixty seven dollars in our revenue and our expenses are at about a hundred and eighty three thousand, eight hundred and ninety one dollars, leaving us a net loss of eighty nine thousand, four hundred and twenty four dollars. And again, these rates were increased, I want to say around June of this year. So um next year, those revenues should go up for a full year. And then the breakdown again on our expenses, um, obviously, the majority of the revenue is going to be under fares. Um, and then the majority of the expenses are going to be wages and benefits because it's a service. Okay, okay, so that's it for the STS. Is there any questions on STS? Okay, so Giaga Transit, um, we do, we have the budget at uh one million, two hundred and twenty eight thousand for two thousand uh twenty three, and we're really close um at one million, two hundred and thirteen thousand. Uh, our operating expenses are at eight hundred and thirty six thousand versus the nine hundred thousand we had uh estimated, so we're very close to budget. Um, this is a tighter budget for us. Um, but their revenue is hopefully going to grow a little bit more due to our DD contracts um or their contracts and us being able to draw those funds down for them. Um, so their their plan is to be increasing their ridership for, um, it actually has increased for this year, but it'll be for the full year next year. So obviously, fares and miscellaneous are at about five hundred and fifty four, and their federal and state is at six fifty eight. So the majority of their revenue does come from uh state and federal grants. And then that's it. Is there any questions on that?
Any questions for Lisa? Is there a motion to approve the November twenty twenty three financial statements for Lake Tran STS and Geog- Is there a motion to approve the November twenty twenty three financial statements for Lake Tran STS and Geogga, Geogga operating financial statements subject to audit and capital plan review?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. McNamee, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Stanger, Trudy, if you could please call her all.
Epic?
Yes.
Matt to me? Nunley?
Yes.
Kismo?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Uh, gonna turn the meeting over to Keith to talk about some landscaping agreements.
Okay. Uh, this fall, we went out for bid for, or request for proposals for grounds maintenance at our, all of our bus stop, well, not bus stops, transit centers, all our properties. Uh, we had a pre-proposal meeting in December, December fourteenth here at Lake Tran, and we had available on Zoom thirteen people, which is a, a large turnout attended for companies, rather. Uh, a vendor does not have to bid on all properties and we don't have to award all properties to one vendor. The proposals were due on January fifth, nine people submitted proposals, most of them for all the properties and all sites. We have seven of them were competitively bid. So you, most of you have seen this slide before. We went out for a proposal, uh, invitation bid, we give specifics on what you want. For, for example, we'd say when to weed, when to, when to fertilize, when to mow, uh, proposals. We're looking for better service, uh, a better look on our properties with this procurement. We, we reviewed a lot of our properties in twenty twenty three and aesthetically, they weren't up to our standards. We're getting more of a mow and go agreement from our vendors. Bushes weren't cut back at the end of the season when they went dormant, they weren't trimmed. Uh, trees weren't getting pruned, overgrown on sidewalks, the bioswell at the college wasn't maintained up to our standards. Um, so we decided a proposal would be better for us. The people in this field, the people that attended our meeting, they're the pros at this, and they could have a better idea of how to get our properties looking the way we want them to, instead of just sending a crew out to cut the grass and leave. We also feel that you get a better response to the scope of work when they propose what they're going to do to meet our expectations. So a three person team, we evaluated the proposals, uh, scored heavily on their ability to perform the work in equipment list. The next set of points was, uh, references. Most of the vendors that showed up all had high marks from all their references and then the reasonableness of cost. Uh, some of them, to me personally, as part of this scoring team, the extremely low ones, you knew didn't read our proposals and were just bidding on cutting grass, not what we're looking for. More to, um, we're specific about weekly inspections, weekly import, reports on how our property looks to avoid dead tree branches, overgrown trees, uh, impeding sidewalks, things like that. So the, these charts and the next couple of slides didn't really fit in the board packet, trying to listen to the board and keep the packets down to pages. This is the averages of our scorings on them. The highlighted ones are the people that had the highest score. I figured the board would want to see them, but they really didn't fit in the board packet. And then here's the Wickliffe and Great Lakes Mall. There's not a lot to say unless you guys have questions for me on, on these slides here. So with, with all the scoring metrics, we came up with two vendors that won our properties, Lassiter and Sons, uh, the College FJP, Madison, Wickliffe and the Great Lakes Mall, Pierce One, Mener, uh, the Painesville and Shoregate Properties. We've dealt with both these vendors in the past. Lassiter actually did, uh, headquarters here as a sub, probably about seven years ago, did a very good job for us. Pierce is an ongoing vendor for us both in snow and, uh, landscaping, and they work for G C R T A, too. So it's my recommendation to, for the board to approve a contracts with Lassiter and Sons for the three year collective price for those four properties of a hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty nine dollars and sixty six cents. And then a separate contract with Pierce for his two properties at a hundred and seven thousand dollars, two hundred, hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and eighteen cents. I can answer any questions or try. It's, it's more beds, but we're, we maintain background and offense, too.
Okay, any other questions for Keith? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh oh one, authorizing the CEO or his designee to enter into and execute agreements for lawn and landscape maintenance services at Lake Tran Properties?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. McNamee, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Zibble. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic?
Yes.
Mac to me? Nunley?
Yes.
Kismo?
Yes.
Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, everyone. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to Emily.
I will real quick jump in. So this is a complicated process. Emily has all of her presentation in here, if you'd like to go over it, or she can give you, uh, the abridged version of the EEO plan. We weren't sure exactly which one the board would prefer.
The abridged version is what I would vote for.
Excellent.
I can do that, so good evening, everybody. Um, I did want to give you a quick description of what our EEO plan is. Uh, we do this every four years and it is basically a comparison of our workforce data with census data. And we're looking for under representation of minorities and females in our workforce. And we're looking at five categories of employees here at Lake Tran. There are three additional categories that don't apply to us. And we need to do this because we are FTA recipients of grant funds. And our last program was submitted in twenty twenty and here we are four years later and it's time to go ahead and make our next submission at a very high level. There we go. There are two areas where we have, um, under representation. Uh, one is in the skilled craft category. Uh, we are underrepresented by white females, which is not, um, uh, an issue that we have not struggled with in the past. In the past, we had zero percent representation. Now we have five point three representation. So we've actually done a little bit better. Um, this is something we're going to continue to work on. We've set a goal of trying to hire one female, white female per year over the next four years. So that is our goal over the next four years. Another area where we are underrepresented by white females is with bus drivers. And this is another area where we have had under representation in the past. Our goal is forty point nine percent. We're at about twenty five percent down a little bit since our last EEO plan. Again, nothing we're concerned about, but our goal is to hire five, I'm sorry, nine white females per year over the next four years. And if we meet that goal, then we will have a more balanced workforce. So with that being said, are there any questions about our EEO plan? Yeah. If not, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
So what are you balancing these numbers against? Is it Lake County, is it Ohio?
Lake County.
Okay.
Lake County census data.
Okay, and so the state then, um, EEO is using the term white female, because generally we just do it as female.
We're doing this based on EEO for data that is submitted, uh, each year. So this is federal data, federal definitions.
Okay, so I guess it's just, it's, I'm not saying this is for Lake Tran, but for the state, it seems confusing that you wouldn't just accept a female, whether she's Asian, black, whatever she tends to be. So is that represented or?
Yes, all of that information is looked at. This is just the one area where we have the, um, the underrepresentation.
Okay, so there are, there's more data that you've collected?
Absolutely. And I'm sorry, I did forget to mention that the entire plan is in Govenda. If you wanted to look at the, um, the, do the, I gave the high level. If you wanted to look at all the details, the entire plan is uploaded in Govenda.
Okay, it's just more granular than I've seen with the state. Generally, them breaking out even more seems a bit, um, I don't know, I don't know why they're doing that, but thanks for the explanation.
Anything else I can answer?
Any other questions or comments for Emily? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh oh two, approving Lake Trans Equal Employment Opportunity Program for submittal to the Federal Transit Administration?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. McNamee, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Stanger, Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic?
Yes.
Mac to me? Nunley?
Yeah.
Kismo? Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Uh, at this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to, it looks like Matt for the operations report.
Thank you, Brian. And good evening, everyone. Excuse me. So dialer ride ridership, uh, November of twenty three saw a seven and a half in percent increase over November of twenty two. We also had five hundred and ninety nine early morning trips and ninety five evening trips. I'm going to drill down a little bit, um, today on those, uh, early morning and evening trips for you. Uh, so fifty two percent of those early morning trips were to work and the rest of those trips were medical, mostly CDC trips. And then, uh, the evening trips, seventy one percent of those were work. The rest were either school or Adam's, Adam's Ford trips.
CDC is dialysis.
Yeah, oh, sorry. Yes, dialysis trips. Um, local route ridership, twenty four percent increase over twenty two. And Park and Ride Ridership saw an eight percent increase over twenty two. So we're doing really good there. If you could go to the next slide.
Yeah, even though the graph looks down in November, that is a normal down in November. So ridership is up even though the graph looks down.
Thank you. So, uh, there was a little blip there in, uh, the end of November, and I mentioned that last month. Uh, we will be seeing a little bit of that. Um, most of the reason for that is of all of the drivers that, uh, left last year, forty two percent of those were in the last quarter of the year. So we saw a very high percentage of people retiring at the end of the year. And, um, obviously we had a class right before that. And, um, we actually have a class starting on Monday of next week. So we're trying to combat it and we're going to be aggressive on our, in our hiring to make sure we are not up in those two hundred range for denials. Anybody have any questions? Yes.
I think over the time period when it was essentially in over the holidays, that, that had to do with the people traveling more as well.
Uh, could you repeat your question? I'm sorry.
During holiday times, do you see increases in denials or rides? Is it in part due to more people traveling at certain times of the year?
Um, that timeframe right there, definitely, there is definitely that, um, to take into consideration because, you know, if you're, if you're Christmas shopping right before the holidays, you know, if you're trying to get trips, there was definitely more, um, trip requests during that time than we have seen in a while. Um, but a lot of that is, you know, losing drivers so quickly, it was, you know, it was tough to keep up with that demand. So.
Do you also track these, Matt, in terms of riders being impacted by the denials? I mean, obviously it's been an ADA trip, they get the trip, come heck or high water.
Yes.
But for example, um,
Like what type of trips are denied?
Type of trip it is, or I know you can tell if, uh, if it's a senior.
Yes.
Yeah.
How does that, just what does that distribution look like?
Um, I would have to, uh, dig a little deeper to really give you a accurate, um, description of that. But, yeah, we definitely have that data, um, and I can get that for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
We can talk about it some more. Thank you.
Sounds good.
So Matt, you were saying that there's, in the whole month, there was only ninety five in the evening of the extended hours in the evening? Is that what your, is that what your earlier slide said?
Yes.
Okay. Less than six hundred in the early morning.
Correct. Yes, the early morning is quite popular. And most of those are work trips and then obviously the rest being dialysis.
Okay.
And medical.
I just was surprised by the large disparity, so I wanted to make sure I was understanding it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We will move on to the six month look ahead. Um, if you want any more information about these, let me know. Uh, we have the STS replacement buses on next month's agenda. This has been a roller coaster, to be quite honest. We, we started out with one plan on a certain bus, a vendor proposed a new plan, bringing the bus here to look at it. So we're still, we'll have, we'll have something for you next month. The buses we planned on, it might be a slightly different bus. We're not totally sure yet, but the one that they proposed out of nowhere that we didn't know existed is a really good fit. So it's going to be here, what day is it, February eighth? February eighth, they're bringing one for us to see. Um, it's a vehicle we didn't know was out there, so it may change our mind on what we want. We're not sure yet. Um, they're in use by private companies all over Ohio. They're just not common in our business. So we're going to take a look at it and see how it shakes out. Um, like I talked about earlier, I have same day dialer ride on the agenda for next month. Um, for March, we have the Madison Park and Ride Construction for Training. Um, this is about to be out to bid. This, again, uh, just to rehash, you know, we have to make some changes in some property somewhere to be able to accommodate the new, uh, federal CDL training requirements. Madison Park and Ride is the best and cheapest place to do that. Um, so that'll be to the board in March. Um, we have some replacement dialer ride buses for Geogga, uh, on the board's agenda in March also, uh, two buses to be specific. Um, we also have, uh, a newer project, which is, uh, bus stop shelters and some sidewalk components along Psalm Center Drive in Willoughby. So, um, the city is using, um, stimulus or, uh, uh, COVID money to kind of complete some of the patchwork of sidewalks on Psalm Center Road. Um, Psalm Center Road is, uh, a very heavily used road by our, our service. It's on Route Two, which is their second busiest route. So, uh, we'd like to partner with them, um, and help make those sidewalks, not necessarily make the sidewalks better, but help make the passenger component a lot better. So we have some pretty heavily used bus stops along there. So we, what I am, uh, seeking to do is for us to partner with the city to fund part of the project, um, to complete some of those sidewalks and really enhance the, uh, amenities for riders. There are four, uh, shelters that would be involved in this project. One of the, I can never remember the name of the apartment complex. It's across from Burger King, but it's the white building, uh, there, Stone Point. I can never remember that. Um, there's two down on the more southern part by Walgreens and Wendy's and that shopping center. We get a lot of public feedback about the lack of amenities by that Wendy's. Um, ever since I've started here, we've gotten significant complaints about the fact that there is, it's very unsafe. There's actually a gentleman that uses a wheelchair that drives it in the road on Psalm Center to get from point to point because there's no sidewalk. Um, so the city is taking care of a lot of that. This partnership with them allows us to get a lot of passenger amenities for a relatively, uh, cheap price. Also in March, we'll have a procurement manual update. Um, we'll make sure we get this to you ahead of time. This is a, a normal update, but we also want to update the language specifically about, uh, the hiring of legal counsel. So we'll make sure this goes to Brandon and the board ahead of time to review before it comes to you. Um, but we're trying to kind of square that up and tie up any loose ends from, uh, um, our normal process and any changes the board would like. Um, in April, we will have the Public Transit, Transit Agency Safety Plan, or the PTAS. But this is an annual process to update our safety, uh, plan. Um, in April, we'll also have a project to upgrade the gasoline tank. Uh, right now, we have a four thousand gallon tank. We would like to upgrade it to a fifteen thousand gallon tank. Um, right now, they fill the four thousand gallon tank several times per week. Um, so we really. Um, so we really don't have a lot of reserve on gasoline in case there's an incident. We also can't get a full truckload, which means the prices are higher. So we would like to replace that tank with a larger one, which will allow us to have a better fuel reserve, it will also reduce the cost of fuel because we can accept an entire, uh, truckload of fuel at one time versus piecemeal. So, uh, CT Consultants is wrapping up the, uh, little bit engineering there is on that, that does have to be approved by the state fire marshal, so we are waiting on his letter of approval here soon. Um, we have, uh, Jugga Transit's propane infrastructure phase one, so uh, Jugga Transit won a grant from FTA for Lono, which will allow them to buy six propane buses, which the board has already approved. Um, this is the fueling component to put propane infrastructure on their property along with a, um, with a dispenser. Uh, it's called phase one because there may be a little bit of money left over, we come back for phase two for some gas detection, some other stuff, but priority is to get the tank in and then after the tank is in, we'll know how much money remains to adjust it to whatever priority is, is best fit to the remainder. Um, in May, we have replacement dial-a-ride buses, so uh, we have grant funds in place to replace twenty one dial-a-ride buses that will reach their end of their useful life in twenty twenty five. Um, with a twelve to eighteen month lead time, uh, it is the right, uh, essentially time, uh, time of year isn't necessarily the right term, but is the appropriate time to replace them. We will have in June, we will have federal grant authority. Um, and, uh, still planning no meeting in July, we are being very cognizant of looking at our plans ahead of time to make sure that neither June or July, I'm sorry, neither June nor August have an overloaded or unbalanced number of, uh, action items, we're sensitive to the fact that last August was a little too much, so, uh, in the event, we start to see more action items coming down the pike and we think one of those meetings will get out of balance, we will recommend a July meeting or, or make some adjustments so that, um, you're not stuck at, uh, a marathon meeting in August again. Roll right through to, to this. All right. Some of these updates are kind of weird to write because you get them while they're happening, but, um, the week of January fifteenth, we passed all of the final inspections for the, uh, expansion part of the building. Um, permit, uh, so we have an occupancy permit. Um, furniture utilities were also completed, so all of us, administration, operations and customer service moved into the new space last week, so we were all wedged in there as a big happy family. Um, the other parts of the building kind of now look like a after effect of a zombie apocalypse where you see people used to be here, but they're gone. Um, after this meeting, the main entrance will be closed and we will start using a new temporary main entrance on the other end of the building. Uh, this room will be cleaned out tomorrow and demolition on this side of the building starts on Wednesday. It's not a ton of demo that's happening in here, but these tables are being reused in some other places. And, uh, we will likely be having board meetings in the training room in the new section of the building. We have a little bit of technology to wrap up to make sure that, uh, goes off without a hitch, but, uh, we're pretty confident that is possible. And so, um, this is our last meeting in this room for a little while. Um, but overall, the project is, is going well, we're on schedule and, uh, no major issues. Strategic plan follow-up, we did a little bit about that today, um, talking about same-day dial-a-ride. Um, and talking about the STS buses, both of those, uh, in theory should be wrapped up here pretty quick. Um, IT strategic plan follow-up, um, uh, Tony had several, uh, interviews for employment and made an offer, uh, on the nineteenth, and our new employee starts February first, his name is Devon. Forget his last name. Donnelly. Um, and we have begun implementation of our new HRIS software, which we are very excited about. Um, hiring, you guys just met Matt a little bit ago. Um, we hosted a hiring event on January tenth and recruited sixteen new drivers. We are trying to rapidly make up for, uh, the loss of those folks at the end of last year. Um, the grant tracker was in your packet, um, no major, uh, news to report, if you will, but, um, both grant trackers for Giaga and, uh, leg trainer in here, if anybody has any questions that I can answer. Happy to go over anything else, if anyone had any questions, I try to, you know, try to be respectful of your time and hit them quick.
Thank you. Okay, um, under old business, I'm going to go slightly off script here, at the last meeting, we passed a, uh, board calendar for the year twenty twenty four. On that board calendar, there's a meeting scheduled for March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty four. Um, if possible, would it be, uh, permissible to move that meeting up one week to March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four? I had a minor, uh, scheduling snafu on my end.
I see no problem with it.
Yeah.
Okay by me.
That's fine.
Great, let's do that.
People reflect that in the calendar and send out a revised, uh, invitation.
Do I need to do a vote to amend the calendar just as a formality?
Yeah, I saw you look at me, I, I, I would suggest a simple vote, uh, is fine here by motion, if that's acceptable.
If you're okay with moving the March twenty, or is there a motion to move the March twenty fifth meeting to the March eighteenth?
So, so moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zibbles. Second by Ms. Stanger, Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic?
Yes.
Mcme? Nunley?
Yes.
Pismo?
Yes.
Sheets?
I don't care, I'm retired.
Stanger?
Yes.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
Yes.
Okay, um, now that the motion is passed, uh, I appreciate everyone accommodating some spring break travel we have going on in our family. Do apologize for that. Um, at this time, uh, Mr. Dines, I'm going to turn the meeting over for you if you would like to do a brief update on the long road you've had with the sales tax journey.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President, I'll try to keep it brief, the, the board will recall, I was asked, uh, a while ago to look into whether or not the Transit Authority, Lake Tran could reduce or rescind a voter-approved sales tax levy by resolution. Uh, our conclusion at that time, which was supported by the Ohio Attorney General and others, was that, of course, reading the statute and its plain terms, that yes, the the board could take that action and do so if it so chose. When I was then asked to look at the implementation of that and what the process is, uh, everyone will recall that we received some guidance from the Ohio Department of Taxation and others that in fact it would have to go to a vote to the electorate. Um, upon see, upon thinking that was a little bit odd and a little bit strange, um, and discussing it with a number of people, we continued down the path to find out if that was in fact accurate or if that was not accurate. You'll all recall the email I sent to you on January fifteenth, which in fact provided a little more, uh, guidance on that. After speaking with Chief Counsel of the Higher Department of Taxation, he indicated that that in fact was not the case, it did not go to the electorate, that the board had that power to rescind, pause, reduce, or otherwise take action with it, as long as it didn't fix the rate above what was approved by the electorate. Um, so with that, then we also sought the opinion from the local prosecutor, which was suggested by the county, I'm sorry, the County Commissioners General Counsel for the State of Ohio. And I provided you with a rather brief, uh, response from the county prosecutor. Um, they're all wonderful folks, I had reached out to them after that and said, is there something a little bit more you can give us for that, and, and I received that on actually the date of our meeting in December, and note that. Um, Mr. Coulson and his staff decided that was, you know, th- they agreed that was sufficient and that's what they provided us, so with that, um, I think all of you have the information in front of you and, and the, the conclusion that we originally came to was in fact correct, that you can take action if you so choose. And what you would do then is by passing a resolution, certify that resolution to the tax commissioner to then implement that.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Dines, and, uh, we appreciate you staying on this with the multiple agencies that were involved. Um, I view this as there are several options that can be done here, one, simply no action can be taken and the tax revenue remains collected, uh, another option is you could completely rescind, um, the sales tax in perpetuity. Or you could, there could be a compromise position or a different position where you may be rescinded for a period of twelve months and you have an annual review to see how, uh, the finances are shaping up then. I believe, Mr. Dines, did I accurately reflect, those are three options among many others that could be considered?
That's correct.
So at this time, um, I'd be, I'd like to open up the floor for any discussion.
Did you mean rescind for a year or suspend?
Believe that terminology might be interchangeable, suspend, rescind for a year.
I don't know about that, but that's okay, I don't care either way.
Yeah, it really, if, if the direction of the tax commissioner is to suspend collection of the tax for a year, um, you know, that's sufficient, a rescission, of course, essentially effectuates the same thing, rescission would lend one to believe that that's a permanent rescission, but remember, the board, it, it, as long as this levy uh, is in its, its capacity, the board can reset or go back to that by again sending a certified resolution to the tax.
Okay, so we don't go, need to go through another vote if, uh, if you use the word rescind for a year.
If it was going to be one year, I believe the terminology would be suspension for one year, and then you could throw in other additional language such as suspension for one year with an annual review to determine what you would do.
That makes more sense.
Forward. I was not an English major, I apologize.
Brandon, is that real clear in the, in the ORC? That that's the process to go through to say that?
Yeah, i- if you're asking what the process is, a certified resolution, if the board resolves, it goes to the tax commissioner and then they implement it from there, yeah. It's, it's patently clear which we thought it was to begin with. It's the implementation that.
Yeah, and, and what about when, when the end of it is, there's, there's no additional thoughts need to be done, and is there uh, evidence that that will happen? Or is there a question as to whether or not the task could be back in place?
I'm not sure I'm understanding, so i- in other words, if the board chose to, I think one of the, one of the options was to suspend it for a year and evaluate. If at that time the board decided now they wanted to reinstitute the tax at its rate that was provided, or a lower rate, anything higher is not allowed. The board could take that action and do that by simply sending another resolution to the tax commissioner.
That was unclear to me in, in the ORC as to what the process was to reinstate it, so it, it, that's what makes me question whether or not it's really a, um, a good move to do something like that to, and, and not run into trouble later on.
Yeah, and, and where things go sideways is if there's been issuing of bonds, which we don't have. And, and that's where, uh, yeah, I would agree with you, the language of the statute is a little nutty. Um, but most statutes, I think somewhat are, I see Kim shaking her head, she would agree. Um, y- you know, i- they don't necessarily hit every single thing and the annotations aren't always wonderful either, but yeah, the board would simply if at that time it decided to go back and, and reinstitute the tax, would just simply send another resolution to the tax commissioner.
Yeah, I don't believe it, but that's okay.
Question. If it's rescinded for a finite period of time, let's say a year, then it needs to be reinstated. And we expect then that the life of that levy before working under still ends at the point in time, or is that extended?
No, it, it would not be extended, it still ends at that point in time.
So if you rescind it for a year, that money's gone forever.
Yeah, I mean, the, the precision of it, then you wouldn't extend the term of the levy by virtue of that suspension, that would not add on at the end, and that money then would not be collected at a later date.
You just mentioned that if it were rescinded, it could be a quarter percent for one year or something less, did you mean less than one quarter?
Yes, i- and, and Mr. Swanson, you'll recall, there were discussions on this, on how the, and, and as I've suggested you before, I'm not a mathematician, but the statute provides, in other word, and I'll pull it up for you, if you'd like, if you want to give me just a moment. I had it here and then I lost my connection, so. Memory serves, we saw one piece of legislation that said it had to go down by one eighth increments and another one that said, uh, one twentieth or something like that.
Yeah, quarters and tenths.
Right. Sorry, let me pull this back.
Yeah, I only know that because the tenths was added specifically for, uh, was lobbied by the Ohio Transit uh, Association for Transit purposes, so I'm very more familiar with that than probably most people, but it's tenths, so point one, point two, and then quarters, so any one of those combos.
Either or though, not.
Well, you could have one levy at, at a quarter and another at a, at point two.
But not within an existing levy.
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, i- if you'd like, I mean, it's rather lengthy, I could read this to you under the statute, but, um, suffice it to say, it states that revised code. The ra- rate of any tax levied pursuant to this section shall be a multiple of one twentieth of one percent. The rate shall not exceed one and one-half percent minus the amount by which the rate levied under fifty seven thirty nine point oh two one of the revised code by a county located in the territory of the Transit Authority exceeds one percent. It's actually levied in the rate increase pursuant to resolution, and it goes on, but essentially, it's you've got increments, it just as Ben and Gary has stated, by which it can be, if I'm, if I'm understanding your question correctly, it can be reduced by that or down to zero.
Are you reading from the Attorney General's opinion?
No, I'm reading fifty seven thirty nine point oh two three.
And yet to put it on the ballot, it, it can only be in one quarter inch range?
I, I can't answer what it would take to put it on the ballot, I don't know that information.
The levy can be, your, your choices are point one, point two, point two-five. There's not, you can't reduce it by a tenth either, so it can't be point one-two-five. It can only be point one, point two, point two-five. Those are your choices. So you could, and, and I say that within our, so our existing levy is for, think of it like up to point two-five. So you could do zero, point one, point two, point two.
Part of the reason I'm curious about that is because when the levy, they were originally trying to get it back in the seventies and eighties, the lowest amount I was told they could go for was not one half of one percent, which eventually was changed, and that's what helped us finally get the levy at a one quarter of a percent.
This was changed in roughly two thousand eighteen and seventeen, it was changed specifically by the, uh, Toledo Area Regional Transit Authority.
So the percentages you just cited, that was in seventeen or eighteen?
I don't remember the year specifically, but it was roughly that time because we led the charge on it.
I was just curious of what the history had been. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we consider uh, a one-year suspension, rescission, whatever you want to call it, uh, for the temporary um, part, the, the, uh, the quarter percent, not the permanent tax, but the, but the perp, the temporary one. Um, and it be reviewed on an annual basis, uh, so that we can make informed, intelligent decisions about, for instance, that there's things that we would decide makes sense to spend money, we don't spend, we don't reduce at such a fast rate that now we're behind the curve again. I think a responsible approach to this makes sense with an annual review.
Uh, Mr. Swanson has made a motion for a one-year suspension of the sales tax collection with an annual review component, uh, is there a second to that motion?
The quarter of a percent.
The quarter of a percent for the renewal levy.
So moved.
Seconded by Ms. Nunley, is there discussion of this?
Is that appropriate language?
Well, the motion, yes, if, if in fact the motion passes, I would suggest then the board has to resolve, and so we'd have to have a resolution that could be certified. We could draft that tonight, or if your motion passes, you could do that the next meeting, it's up to the board how you want to handle that, but for the motion on the table, um, that can be passed and then the board would have to, it has to be a certified resolution.
Got it, thanks.
I
Can you?
What is it, what does that mean?
Just clarify for everyone what that means, please.
Yeah, what the statute provides is that there has to be a certified resolution sent to the tax commissioner, and the tax commissioner then implements that based upon receipt of that certified resolution, and there's time periods prescribed by which they would act, so.
What is a certified resolution?
I'm not sure I understand. We have resolu, I'm sorry, so at each meeting, we've got a number of resolutions, when you guys earlier resolved and voted and said, yes, we approve that, then at the end, that gets signed by Mr. Capel and Mr. Felkowski. What would happen after that is that Mr. Capel, you would charge him as a secretary to send that down to the tax commissioner, and it's signed on there, just simply that, yes, I certified this resolution was in fact on January twenty ninth or whatever it was, and that's really all, that's the certification, it's not, you know, it's not stamped or anything otherwise.
So this vote would just really be to say we want to de- develop that resolution?
Correct.
Okay. Then we have another vote, either this meeting or the next meeting.
Yeah.
Because we'd have to, we'd want to have some kind of review on that rope language.
Which is fine, i- i- it's up to you as a board, right, Mr. Swanson's made the motion so that you're, you're wholly correct if that's what you choose to do.
Yes. Got it. I would recommend, but if, if you say twelve months, you put a, when you'd like it to start. So that like, twelve months beginning June.
Do we have?
That's the type of language that I would want to make.
So do we have a choice in that matter?
Yeah, the, the, the sta- Yeah, the 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 sta- the statute provides, any change in the rate of tax shall be made effective on the first day of a calendar quarter. Next, following the sixty-fifth day, following the date, the tax commissioner receives the certification of the resolution.
Why would you pick a date? So that's July first, basically, at the earliest.
Presumably, yes.
That would be July first or October first, potentially. Is that fair?
Well, yeah. So the the first day of a calendar quarter, you and, you know, it it that would, it would be made effective on that date. Next, following the sixty-fifth day, following the date the tax commissioner commissioner receives the certification.
Somebody's got to figure that out.
So, yeah, I mean, that's, again, I don't propose to be a mathematician, that's why I went to law school.
Well, then for the purpose of tonight's discussions, can we s- can we, can I modify my motion to say at the earliest? Practical or earliest appropriate, whatever the right terminology would be, at the earliest possible time?
Yeah, absolutely. And and then if you're modifying it, it was discussion, so now we'd need a second again.
Okay, well, and let me add one more modification to it then, to Chuck's point, which I think is a good point. Um, so we set a a beginning date um in twelve months following that, right? So we'd have a beginning and an end of of that rescission.
I would caution you not to do that in this motion because we haven't really figured out the timing.
Yeah, no, no, what I'm, what I'm saying in the motion is. At the earliest practical practical point it begins and and it ends twelve months following that. Beginning, so we have a beginning and an end to it.
Probably as practical point it begins. So, Mr. Dines, what, so we have a possible amendment to the motion to add in earliest practical point that it could begin. Um, we have not seconded that yet. Um, is the recommended course to move forward just to get the amendment all done in one swoop? Is it to have the motion or the resolution written tonight? Or is it to have the resolution reviewed and then the specific resolution passed at the next meeting? Or some meeting of the board between now and the next meeting?
That that answer is really up to you. We could certainly draft a resolution tonight after the motion. And everyone could review it and then vote upon it or upon the motion, depending upon amendments or otherwise. The board could say we'd like to review a resolution next month. Again, it there's no right or wrong answer. It's really what the board decides to do and what action it wants to take.
For me, I'd rather wait and read and put some thought into what the resolution.
I think we, I think we can be pretty quick here and 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 it's not going to be that complicated. I think we can do that tonight.
Aside from the date, there's nothing much more, that seems.
And and the only thing I would say right now, i- getting into further discussion, it may be going off the amendment per se. It's just to seek a second on the amended motion and then further discussion afterwards.
Is there a sen- second on the amended motion for the earliest practical point that it can begin? Mr. Sheets, you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we have motion, an amendment to the motion. Do we need to vote on any of those now, or should we have more discussion?
I- if if there's no further discussion, then you could proceed to a vote.
I don't understand what I am voting for, so I'm not comfortable until I understand that. Wha- what, all we're doing right now is voting on a resolution? A motion. Can you explain it again, Mr. Dens?
Yeah, so my understanding is Mr. Swanson made a motion to suspend the sales tax collection of a quarter percent renewal levy. And then we talked about the earliest practical time. But in other words, his motion was to draft and develop a resolution to be certified by this board. I think that was the underlying thought, what you said at the end of your motion. And and then the board would take action pursuant to the resolution, which it would then have to enact subsequent to the the motion.
So is there then a, is there then a second motion to approve the resolution?
Well, what you would have is upon reading of the resolution, yes, as we would otherwise, it'd be a motion and a second, and then our approval of that resolution. Our normal resolution process.
All right, so it sounds like we should be voting at this time, yes or no, to move forward with the motion. And then after that is complete, it would be, is this a tonight thing?
Yeah, is the motion's directing a resolution under those terms to be drafted and and provided to the board for further action upon the resolution.
Okay, is everyone clear on what the motion is? So a yes vote would be for developing the resolution. And then a no vote would be, no, okay. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic?
Yes.
McDemy?
No.
Nunley?
Yes.
Pismo?
No.
Sheets?
Yes.
Stanger?
No.
Swanson?
Yes.
Zibble?
No.
Uh, and I will vote for a tiebreaker. I will vote yes, please. Okay, so the next question here is, is this resolution? Or now that the motion is passed, is this resolution to be created this evening? Or is this to be between now and the next meeting? And I'd like to open the floor for discussion.
Don't see any reason why we're not smart enough to get it done tonight.
Uh, Mr. Dines, what kind of timetable is needed to develop this?
I've I've got plenty of resolutions. If if the board so chooses to do it tonight, I'm more than happy to draft it uh right now and provide something for everyone to review.
Do we want to take a, do we want to take a brief recess then to allow you to do that?
That would be fine.
Uh, fifteen minutes, good?
Uh, probably five.
Okay, it's six thirty. Let's take a brief recess until six forty, please. Thank you.
There is food back there if anyone would like it. It's.
That.
How big of a doctor it was? Oh, there it is. I was taking a short time.
Never got me anywhere. And like, when I needed help, I was just supposed to listen to the people. Listen to them, just give in to them what they want. These people need more, I swear. We need like something global to happen to this. Rithering brains, now we need a, we need a, we need a palette of clay.
I think it, I think this is the wrong one. Gary was talking about the one that lasted ten years.
Let me where you can get a printed copy of this.
Hmm? I can't print here. He will, but they.
Where's he goes?
I'm all for that.
Oh, there you go. Now he's.
Can you play this?
I think that's in process.
It's what?
I think that is in process.
Uh, but hang on, this still says. Providing later on one one quarter of one percent for a continuing period of time to all transpirations. But that's not the levy that Gary had already done.
That's why I put up, so you can discuss it like, why I don't wish to tell them.
So.
We're all here, we can get it done.
It's not an easy way. It's going to get changed. So do you want to print a copy now?
We're all going to vote, how we're going to vote.
It's going to get edited.
Well, I can't even read it.
I mean, I can't.
Get this screwed up.
I mean, it's.
We have no individual ability to scroll it, to read it, to understand.
I understand. So what do you want? I can give you the version that we have, but the second.
That's fine, and if it's amended, then print another one.
Okay, well, the printer is not close anymore, so this is much more difficult task, it sounds.
What?
The printer is like a quarter mile that way now.
This wasn't my idea. I just know I need to be able to read.
Doing my best. This printer or this computer can only do so many things at a time, so. Can it print four, a late, a late by fourteen? All right, you think I need to change? Is it going to come out the right way? Right. Okay, well, I I pressed print. I hope the computer doesn't explode, so. It is. Running should be this, so I have little concerns. If only just now I think finished sending the print job. Oh, God. Dispatch, the one connected in dispatch? But actually, hang on, the printer just only sent me revised language, so let me. Let's replace all of the.
All the bold.
Yeah, all of the black text. So all of this. Messed up the formatting slightly, but that's. Now it's time to get printed, so where are you on the printer? I mean, wait. I mean, wait till you've got it ready. I mean, quick, I asked him.
If you want, before you print, I think I would sort of discussion on this.
Donna would like to see it, she wants to see it now.
All right.
It could be, this is.
That's that's.
Okay, the print job has been sent. The print job has been sent, Tony is retrieving the paper. I believe you are. It will be provided in a moment, so you can proceed if you like.
Okay, we're back from recess at six forty-five P M. I appreciate everyone's patience. I'm fine opening a floor up for any discussion at this point of the, or Mr. Dines, you want to explain maybe some of the language and why you did what you did? I think that's a better starting point.
Sure, so the 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 crux of the resolution, you all have that in front of you, is in the bold uppercase language. Below that, you'll see if Ben's able to scroll down, the first where as clause references the prior levy, so the tax commissioner is aware of where this came from and what the history of it was. The second where as clause talks about upon submission of the question levy tax electors Lake Tran was successfully passed by electors, one quarter of sales and use tax was thereby initiated and implemented. The board now desires to submit to the tax commissioner of the state of Ohio a certified resolution directing the commissioner to suspend and reduce the collection of the one quarter of one percent sales tax to zero percent as provided to Lake Tran. Whereas this board desires for the tax commissioner to act in accordance herewith and is further provided or by the Ohio revised code and the tax commissioners in Ohio Department of Taxation's proper procedures. And the board desires to review and evaluate the suspension and setting of the tax rate to zero percent after one year of suspension.
Whereas the board desires to review and evaluate the suspension and setting the tax rate to zero percent after one year of suspension. So that language is in there just to advise the tax commissioner that we will be reviewing it.
Yeah, I based upon what you all said, I just added that. As a means by which to make it known, this resolution is not intended necessarily to be one that completely, you know, foregoes collection of this into the future. I think that was the point of the motion.
And I would read that sentence then to say that the suspension is going to continue on past twelve months. Because it's going to be twelve months and we're gonna do the review and then get back to him to 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 reinstitute it.
Thank you, that's exactly how I'm reading that. And I cannot look for that language.
How would you like it to read? I'm I'm happy to draft it however everybody prefers.
The board desires to review.
You're asking the wrong guy for that.
Yeah.
When you, oh, sorry, excuse me. When when the time comes that we were to, you know, say we were to decide that we wanted to reinstitute it. Does it need to go through that same process again about the quarter day and the sixty five days after that and the blah, blah, blah? It's not gonna be instantly, it's gonna be another, so really it will be closer to an eighteen months minimum.
It's supposed to be instant, if he put a date in there that we wanted it back.
And again, this is, this is the point of the discussion, to however everybody pleases to do it. I I, we're drafting this on the spot.
Well, I I'm just asking, hold on, hold on. Donna, wait, I'm just asking a question, I'm not expressing an opinion at this time.
I know you're not, but I am.
Okay, but I was talking first. What is, I'd like to know how the process will work when the time comes that if and when we decide to redo this. Is it going to be, is it going to be as simple as it will come back in automatically on a certain date? Or is it going to be another six month, you know, whatever process, which really pushes the total period of the suspension out to eighteen, possibly even longer months?
Yeah, Kim, Kim's question was actually the same one that I had, which is at the end of the twelve month period, is it automatically presumed that the sales tax restarts unless there is another suspension passed? Or does it say so stay suspended until they are advised to start collecting? Because then the annual review, it seems like, would need to be six months or so in advance.
Yeah, that's.
Where does this six months come from? Help me with this.
Well, I was just nicking that out because he was saying like the the quarter day and then the sixty five days after that, it it's a long period of time.
It's not six months.
Okay. Three month, whatever.
I do agree, there may be delay.
Yeah, so because you've indicated that you want an annual review, that's, that's again, we have to work through that language here tonight and decide how you want to quantify that. I'm happy to, if it's annual review at a set point in time, this is your resolution, it certifies the tax commissioner, you want them to suspend it. Upon your decision in annual review to reinstitute it, then the tax commissioner goes through his process to reinstitute the tax.
For what it's worth. My intention, when I said this. I hadn't thought about the possible delay, but my 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 thought at the time was to say that after a year, we review it and see where we're at. That, I mean, I think that's exactly the way I said it, was that at the end of the year, we say, okay, what do we want to do? Now, so set it, set that at nine months.
I Lisa does have a statement.
Microphone, please.
When you, when you passed, so there was a whole process when you passed this, so you know, you had to submit by August to the Board of Election. And then when it got put on the ballot in November. And so when that got put on the ballot, it followed all this language with all those dates. Just to give you an idea, because I do have it noted on that sales tax spreadsheet when we started to get it, and it is an almost six month before things went into place, because by the time you got it from November and you got it to the tax commissioner and then they started it. So the actual collection, when you passed it on November fifth, started April first in the stores. But it never really, and then and then the cash never really got to us until April or May. But the point that it had to get started in April, that should kind of be your timeframe, I think, of how long it's gonna take, just to give you an idea.
Real quick, I don't, I don't, I just would add, I know this isn't my point or place necessarily. The the review process isn't germane to the tax commissioner, so I don't think you need to put it in the resolution at all. I think that we're gonna be looking at this on a monthly basis, the whole time it happens. And so you can be reviewing it constantly, but the review part is not, it it means nothing to the tax commissioner. So how the board wants to do that and move forward with it. I I think you're suspended for twelve months, it's done, and then you're always reviewing it.
You're a hundred percent correct, the tax commissioner is not gonna act on that. That's language in the resolution pursuant to what the motion and what this board wishes to do. The tax commissioner is gonna look at what it needs from there and extrapolate that for its purposes.
And I guarantee you, that language is going to be what the board is going to follow. Whatever the constitution of that board is, when we give up this insanity. It needs to be specific when it begins and when it ends, or I guarantee you, there's gonna be more money going out the door. To save the average taxpayer thirty dollars out of every ten thousand dollars of taxable goods. This is just insane.
Ms. McNamee, I I I think you know I'm simply legal counsel, I'm following the direction of the board. I have no stake in this, I have no say in this, I have no political persuasions, one way or the other. Well, I was asked by the board to research this, this was not my doing in any way, shape or form, I'm legal counsel, that's it.
Can you please go back up to the?
You're also not advised of any consequences unintended or otherwise of what this could do.
No way, I don't think this is turning into an attack on.
Mr. Dines.
Mr. Dines is doing his job.
Mr. Dines did the job that was asked of him by the board.
I understand that some of us don't like the answer, and I agree with you on that, to be frank. But that doesn't change the fact that he's doing his job and we have to respect that, that is his job that we pay him for.
I could respond to that, but I will refrain from in this setting.
I would say there needs to be some specific dates in there, because the way I read it, it was very loose, you know, the Ohio revised code is very loose also on reinstating it. So as I thought we talked earlier, the start and stop date in the in the resolution was what we were gonna be seeing, and I don't see that in there now.
Mr. Dines, is it mathematically possible to calculate these dates, or is that too up in the air?
Well, I I don't think it is, because some of that depends upon the date upon which the tax commissioner receives this from Lake Tran, as Lisa's nodding. So we don't know when that is, if it's sent to him in certified mail. It's it's really hard to say, that's why the statute provides for the direction to the tax commissioner to act upon such time as when it's received. It's then prescribed with those time periods, so we can't do that because we don't have the ability to know when it would be received and how he.
Why didn't you put language in there, something to that it would end twelve months after the date it began, and then those dates are gonna depend on when it actually gets started.
Again, I I was, the board, the motion was for an annual review, there wasn't a specified end date, so if the board wants to change its mind on that, again, I acted direction of the board.
Can we please call a question?
Is there any other discussion?
I cannot believe that we are doing this. This money may well be a one time thing, and we're just putting it right back out the door. It's irresponsible.
At this time, is there a motion to approve the resolution? And I'm going to read the language in bold, just so everyone is on the same page. Is there a motion to approve the resolution directing the tax commissioner of the state of Ohio to suspend for one year and set zero percent the collection of the renewal tax levy presently providing Lake Tran with one quarter of one percent pursuant to sections three oh six point seven oh, five seven three nine point oh two three, and five seven four one point oh two two of the Ohio revised code and at the earliest time provided by statute.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Sheets, is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Swanson, or seconded by Mr. Swanson, excuse me. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
McNamee.
Absolutely not.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
No.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
No.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
No.
And I will cast a vote for a yes. Thank you. And Mr. Dines, will you be in communication now and following up with everyone? Okay, we are now, or is there any other old business in the room?
Can we have a motion to implement the Ohio checkbook?
Well, let's go to the new business section, and Mr. Sheets, you've made a motion to implement the Ohio checkbook. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Swanson. Uh, Trudy, or is there discussion? Trudy, if you could please call the roll. Well, wait, excuse me, excuse me.
So we we have been implementing this a- as we've been going, this is a substantial amount of work that we have been making progress on, and we're not, we don't have any intention to stop it. So I want to make sure I am clear on the direction that I am being provided.
It sounds like there is a motion to complete the Ohio checkbook and get the records online.
Which we have been working towards, it is, Lisa has been committing two to three hours a week right now.
When when would you expect to be done then, Ben?
I'm hoping I'm like two thirds of the way through the descriptions on the sub accounts. When I submitted it to them, I submitted it.
When I submitted it to them, we had a report created in Sage to be able to generate all that information. Um, and I, we use a main account number, but the main account's broken out into three parts, a main, a sub, and a department. And we have description for the department and the main, but we don't have description for the sub account. So I have to get that description in there, and I have been working on that, but it's like ten pages long and it's like thirty or forty subaccounts, and I'm like a little over two thirds, but with having only three people in my department and then the move and then all the stuff with the budget and all that stuff going on, I didn't have as much time to put towards it here this past fall. But I have been working on it. My goal is to have it done before I leave.
That's where my question is going.
I believe Mr. Sheet's motion is just to ensure that the board is aware that this is going on and supports doing this project. So again, Trudy, could you please call the roll?
Epic.
Yes.
McNamee.
No.
Nunley.
Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yeah.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
No.
Okay, thank you. Um, also in the new business section, at this time, is there a motion to exercise one of the two two year options? Again, it's to exercise one of the two two year options in Mr. Capel's employment contract?
Yes.
So moved.
A motion made by Ms. Nunley, seconded by Ms. Stanger. Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
McNamee.
Nunley. Yes.
Pismo.
Yes.
Sheets.
Yes.
Stanger.
Yes.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone, is there any other new business?
Thank you.
Um, and a thank you from Mr. Capel, seeing no other new business, at this time is our motion to adjourn.
So move.
A motion by Ms. Nunley, is there a second? Second by Mr. Swanson, Trudy, if you could please call the roll.
Epic.
Yes.
Nunley.
Yes.
McNamee. Pismo. Sheets.
I'm retired, yes.
Stanger.
Yeah.
Swanson.
Yes.
Zibble.
Yes.
Okay, we are adjourned at seven oh one. Thank you, everyone.